Call for meeting's order, will you please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we offer a moment of silence for our service people, both here and abroad, both past and present, and also for our healthcare workers. Please be seated. Well, first and foremost, welcome to a live meeting of the Select Board.
Aye.
It's been since March, the last live meeting we had was March 9th, 2020, two years ago. So, this is unprecedented times. I also would like to offer an apology to everybody if I sound kind of funny. I'm having issues with a tooth in my tongue that is just causing me incredible pain, so. But, I'm talking funny and I try not to talk as much today as possible, so. I'm sure a lot of people out there will be very happy about that.
You sound better.
All right. And, it's like exercising, once you get going, that's it. All right, first item on the agenda, we have the Allen Dale Country Club. They're looking to change the Sunday hours. I believe we have Representative Eric Farias from the Allen Dale Country Club. All right, Eric, just tell us what, everybody, what you want to do, what are the current hours and what you're looking to change?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you very much for your time today. So currently, we have a 12 o'clock start on Sunday and looking to have the opportunity to serve brunch on Sunday morning, so looking to move up that 12 o'clock to a 10 a.m. start to support alcohol with the brunch serving that we want to start conducting on Sunday mornings.
Great, and we have the issue regarding the bottomless mimosas taken care of, correct?
Correct, yeah, that was rectified immediately, appreciate the update on that one.
Excellent, thank you for that, by the way, appreciate that.
You like the bottomless mimosa, is that it?
We continue to learn as we go, so.
No, I'm not a mimosa drinker, actually, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Herron, on the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No more, roll call votes, I love it.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, good luck. All right, 6:32, we have Olive Garden change of offices. This is, this is going to be continued to the next meeting as he's going, has another issue coming up, so we're going to do a twofer. We're going to try to save people lawyer bill money, so.
Excellent.
Good.
No, no.
Which lawyer?
Not trying to do anything to you, Anthony, so please, don't take offense.
Not one of our lawyers.
Let me check the time, okay, I got 6:35. Okay, we have the, let me get to the next part, please. This is the one good thing about paper, no paper, you've got to flip through everything. That's a lot of forms for the Olive Garden. I have it here, I just want to, all right, here we go. Okay, I'm going to open up the meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust. That is now open, and we have a hearing on the approval of the consulting contract of the Affordable Housing Assistance Purchase Program, and since you're at the dais, I believe Mr. Hadad, you'll be speaking.
Yes, I will, so for the record, Cody Hadad, Director of Development. Before you is a consulting contract of the Affordable Housing Trust. We're looking to bring back the Housing Assistance Buydown Program. We issued the RFQ with the trust's approval on December 6th. We received one response, Mr. McGinnis and I evaluated that response. We found that it was advantageous, and so we'd like to move forward and execute a contract.
Okay, and the cost of professional services is?
Not to exceed $20,000.
Terrific. Okay, members, do you have any questions on this?
I do.
Mr. Herron.
Cody, has, could you explain the history of this, like how many applied for it last year and received funds?
Yeah, absolutely, so, we've run the program two times in the past. We've helped two homeowners in total in the program, so we provided $150,000 in first-time homebuyer assistance through a grant. We had one applicant, I'm sorry, two applicants this past time, and we had three the first time. So, it's, it should be more competitive, so one of our goals is to really work on getting, improving our marketing and getting it out there. It's a great program, so part of this will be really revamping the marketing strategy.
Okay.
It's an great opportunity for something.
And both, and both people who are under the program are doing well, correct?
Yeah, they do well, we check in with them annually through annual compliance and they're doing great, it's a great program, so we hope to expand on it.
David?
Is there a target audience of some kind, or is it all over the place, age-wise and age-wise?
So, any age, really, it's targeted towards first-time homebuyers. The guidelines are set out by DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development. So, we're limited on income brackets in items such as that, but we try to really open it up as much as we can. What we're seeing now is with home prices being so expensive, we're looking to try to increase the amount that we're able to give people toward it, so they can actually buy a home in Dartmouth and stay here.
Isn't a major part of the program to reach people who don't know about the program? And it seems like that's a pretty big job.
Yeah, so that's, we're going to help, this consulting firm will help us, they've helped us in the past and they've done great work with other communities, and we'll really try to explore all avenues.
So they have an expertise in who the population is and how to reach them?
Oh yeah, absolutely, they're, they have a lot of experience with this.
Excellent.
Any other board members? Okay, is anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this? Anybody in the audience who would like to speak against it? Going to close the hearing, board members, pleasure.
Motion to approve the Affordable Housing Assistance Program and no more than $20,000.
Second. Okay, motion to approve the consulting contract for the Affordable Housing Assistance Purchase Program, made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Gracie. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, just pass around, the little contract will be signed, be passed around.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was wondering if we could put on the agenda next, at the next meeting, since we're talking about housing here, the Mendez Montero Housing Project on Anderson Way.
Sounds good to me.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that concludes our appointments. New business, first item on the agenda, we have an appointment to the Municipal Broadbent Committee. Kevin Estes, is Kevin here, or Kevin's probably, correct, Kevin's probably the planning board?
Planning board.
Okay, this is the position that was vacated by Mr. Mathis. So this will complete the committee, and we'd like to get this committee going, so. Board, pleasure.
Motion to appoint.
Check it.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Gracie. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None unanimous? Next item on the agenda, we have a letter from the Council on Aging to propose to change, to replace the name Senior Center at the Council on Aging Building to the Maria Connor Center for Active Living. I believe Amy DePietro's here, along with several other members of the board. Just for the record, we also have letters of support from the Dartmouth Housing Authority, from the Veterans Advisory Board, from Coastline, from Dartmouth High School Alumni Association, and Dr. Cynthia Marland. Amy?
Hi, good evening, thank you for having me. Amy DePietro, Director of the Council on Aging. The Council on Aging Board has put forth a request to change the name of the Senior Center from the Dartmouth Senior Center to the Connor Center for Active Living. I have a prepared statement, and then I believe Cindy Marland may as well. I have had the pleasure of working alongside Maria Connor for the past 10 years. She has been instrumental in the development of my career. She is always a wealth of knowledge, whether it be questions about the origin of the Social Day Program, elderly nutrition program, or the history of the Council on Aging and elder services. She has always been my go-to for information. Her wealth of knowledge on the history and evolution of the Council on Aging has been important in remembering where the community established its roots and where we hope to go in the future. However, when we think of Maria Connor, we also think of her fundraising skills. Over the past several years, Maria and the Dartmouth Friends of the Elderly have raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for programs, services, and infrastructure that directly impact the lives of seniors in the community. Her steadfast dedication to senior issues, housing, veterans' concerns, et cetera, is second to none. For years, the Dartmouth Council on Aging has been wanting to change the name of the Senior Center to reflect the changes in the aging population. We have a youthful, vibrant, energetic center where we strive to offer current programs for all ages. Our programs focus on the health and wellness of our community. The motto "Not Your Mother's Senior Center" has been used many times and truly fits our model. No longer are the programs geared toward a sedentary lifestyle. Our programs are jam-packed with high-energy activities such as Zumba and Tai Chi, purposeful programs where knitters and sewers are donating their goods to war-torn and impoverished countries, and educational programming where seniors are learning to communicate in the digital age. Normally, a dedication of some sort is done posthumously. I believe that people should be acknowledged and celebrated while they are here to enjoy the recognition. Maria's devotion to social service and the community made this an easy decision. We all hope to make a lasting impact in the life of others. How else will our memory live on? Changing the name of the Dartmouth Senior Center to the Connor Center for Active Living will honor her legacy and recognize the important role she's played in our senior community.
Amy?
Yes.
Has it been 10 years already?
It has been.
Wow.
Well, since I started, 11 years, actually. It's been five years since I, five and a half years since I've been the director of the program. Time flies.
We're having fun.
Yeah. We are having a lot of fun.
Dr. Marland?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
This feels weird, okay. It's so appropriate that I stand before you in the John Marland Meeting Room for your first face-to-face meeting. It's also interesting that it's Women's History Month, where the country celebrates strong women who have contributed in service above self, those of who have made significant contributions to our communities and to our nation. It has also been evident that, in my own doctoral research, that baby boomers, individuals born between the years of 1946 and 1964, want nothing to do with the words elderly, aging, and old. The name of the Council on Aging or the Senior Center needs to be rebranded to attract the baby boomers to the center. One-third of our population is over 60 in the town of Dartmouth. The volunteer staff at the COA is shrinking. New blood is needed to serve and assist with this volunteer population. I have been encouraging the Dartmouth Council on Aging for years to adapt the programs to attract the baby boomers, and they have raised to the occasion. But now it's time to change the name. For her level of commitment, her innovative spirit, her steady leadership, and her caring to all the residents over age 60, I encourage you to change the name of the Maria, to the Maria Connor Center from the Council on Aging. I ask for your support to make this dream happen in order of a woman who epitomizes Dartmouth pride, because changing the name to the COA, to the Maria Connor Center, will be the best move ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Marland. Right, it's what's on the, right? Yeah, okay. All right. If there wasn't something that came before this board that's a no-brainer, it's very hard-pressed to figure it out, that's for sure. Every single one of us up here knows the impact Maria Connor's had on the Council on Aging and the Friends of the Elderly, and every single one of us know because we've also had our arms twisted by Maria Connor on several times, so, sometimes both arms. But, and I don't, I don't think anybody who's come, who's sat in these chairs before us also recognizes the work that Maria has done. So this, to me, is an absolute no-brainer. And just for the record, that we're looking to change the name of the center to the Maria Connor Center for Active Living, as requested by the Council on Aging Board, the Board of Directors, correct?
That is correct. The Council on Aging is actually the social service agency. The building itself is the Senior Center, yes.
Okay. Members, do you have any questions on this? Because, to be honest with you, you better not have any questions.
You know what's coming tomorrow.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yeah, I comment, it's such an appropriate in every single way. My only question is, and I, you just mentioned it, but is the, the board has voted on the name, satisfied that this is what they want based on, because it, my only question would be that this is a very evolving building and evolving activities involving an awful lot of people, and if the board is satisfied that this is what does the trick, then fine. Because this has all happened pretty quick, and I'm just wondering, is it all necessary to go back and say, we'll do a little more research, come up with, is the board satisfied?
So, the board was satisfied, we have done a little bit of, we have, over the past few years, been doing research on what other communities are calling their Senior Centers. So we have the Center for Active Living, the Center for Engagement, different centers. I think what the primary ask today was to name the building after Maria Connor. So, we definitely know it's the Connor Center. The board did vote to, for the name Connor Center for Active Living. If that's something that, you know, anybody had any other ideas, we would certainly be open to that, because like you said, the senior population is evolving. We kind of want to get away from that senior, just the term senior. If we're not aging, we're not living. So, there's absolutely no shame in the word, but we just really want to more focus on the active, healthy lifestyles that we're promoting. So, again, if you have, you know, a different suggestion, but we have, we have done a little bit of research to see what other communities are naming their centers.
And just, and just satisfied, fine, but I just go look back at the old Boston Garden, which is a TD Bank, whatever Garden it is, and all the money the bank spent and all the recognition, it's the Garden. And they got short-changed. And I'm just making sure that we're satisfied that if we have something short or long, that it's going to be called that, and Maria gets the recognition.
Maria will, I think that's the 100%, that's what everybody agrees on, is Maria Connor Center. Like you said, nobody deserves it more than she does.
No, that's not a debate.
Yeah.
In 20 years from now, is it going to be called that, as it should be, whatever that name is?
As it should be, yes.
I don't want to make a big deal of it, I think it's a major concern because...
Yes, I also reached out to the Executive Office of Elder Affairs just to make sure there wasn't anything else that we had to do at the state level, and I was told that once it was approved by the Select Board, we just have to let them know of the name change, because again, we're not changing the Council on Aging, we're strictly changing the name of the building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I could tell you, as part of the boomer class, yeah, I have a problem with Senior Center, so, big. You are a senior, okay? You are beyond the boomer class, so you're not part of that boomer class.
Correct.
You're part of the Methuselah class.
Correct.
Nothing to be ashamed of.
I think everybody else in here is part of the boomer class, if I'm not mistaken, so we're all set.
You can call me grandpa, but that's all right.
You knew Moses too, so, anybody else?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion, the motion would be to rename the building as the Maria Connor Center for Active Living, correct?
Maria Center, Maria Connor.
Maria Connor Center for Active Living.
Yes, that's good, that's the motion.
Okay, Mr. Herron made the motion. There's a second made by Mr. Gracie and everybody else. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right. Terrific, okay, let's see.
Good job, ladies.
Next item on the agenda, we have the State Subdivision Agreement for the State Opioid Settlements, and I believe that's why Mr. Savistano, Attorney Savistano's here. So, I guess, Attorney?
Sure.
So, David, can you, or just, again, there you go.
So as you may recall, the board's previously approved a settlement back in July of 2021. They, the quote-unquote Big Three distributors, the three distributors of opioids, along with the producer Johnson &amp; Johnson, reached a settlement of $26 billion with member states, a number of states that were involved in litigation. Our council through the firm Motley Rice was negotiating on behalf of the municipalities. So for the first 30 days, a majority of the states had to sign on to this settlement. Then there was another 120-day period where they had to sign up a supermajority of the municipalities to this. And there was a negotiation between the Attorney General's Office and council for the municipalities to determine what percentage would be given to the municipalities. And that has slowly increased through the negotiations. At one point, we got to about 30%, and it looked like that was the best, that the municipalities would get. Ultimately, there was a 35%, I think it was in December, that this board already signed on. They've managed to negotiate up to 40% now of the money that's coming to the states, that's coming to Massachusetts. Each state has its own negotiations. Massachusetts, the negotiation with our Attorney General gives 60% to the state now and 40% to the participating municipalities. So if you don't sign on this, then you're not a participating municipality. So this will give us significant monies to address the opioid crisis going forward.
So, we're looking at somewhere around just over $100 million to the municipalities?
The, for Mass, so the total proposed was $26 billion, of course, in terms of Massachusetts. I'm not sure yet how much is being earmarked specifically to Massachusetts, but of that, 40% will go to the municipalities. It will be, the, there's two separate settlements. The settlement with the distributors pays $21 billion over 18 years, and the one from Johnson &amp; Johnson is over nine years, $5 billion over nine years.
All right, so since this is a settlement, this would need to be approved by the board?
That's correct.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Just the office, is there any downside or negativity to this attached to us?
No, this is very good. It's better than we expected.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This does not preclude us from participating in future litigation against other distributors and manufacturers. There's still more cases potentially.
Excuse me, so how many years does go out, the payments?
The one with the distributors is 18 years, and the one with the manufacturer, Johnson &amp; Johnson, is nine years.
Right, okay, so everybody knows there's a timeframe, it doesn't all come at once.
And it can't just go into the general fund, it's very...
And it just, it can't just go into the general fund, it's very specific.
Right, right.
Earmarked.
So everybody can, yeah, I think that's a good thing you expound on what this contract actually, you know, does for the town of Dartmouth.
Do you estimate when the funds would actually start coming in?
I, I guess, two years, five years, 10 years? When the train comes, when the train comes?
All of the above.
When we get notice that we're receiving funds from services, you know, half of the town is going to see that anywhere.
It's not going to be that quick. Okay.
We'll be next month.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully it's next year.
The train might make it first then.
Well, it still has to be settled, I mean, whatever has to be done with, with the state still has to be settled through the court system anyway, correct? So, yeah, so that's going to take some time. Okay, do I have a motion to approve this agreement?
Motion to approve the agreement.
The second, motion made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-unanimous? All right. That's good.
You don't, you don't need me for anything else, Mr. McDonald.
No, you're all set, unless, nope, I don't think you would need it for the next one either. All right, next item is we have an update on the Marijuana Zoning Board of Applications.
Do you have one quick question before?
Sure.
Is it, while our council is here, is it inappropriate to ask them a question about a long-term town issue that we, just the status and what we might do for future meeting?
It's not on the agenda, yeah. I would say no, but put it in an email to me, and I will send it to, put it on C.C. Shawn, and then we'll...
I suspected that by the answer.
All right.
Thank you.
Hi, Cody.
Hello. So, just to give you a brief summary of the marijuana establishments in town, zoning Board of Appeals decisions, there's been, we've, so, just go back a little bit in time. In order for marijuana establishments to locate in Dartmouth, there's kind of two components, one of them being the zoning component, and the other being the host community agreement, which is through the Select Board. The zoning component, so Town Meeting in 2018 passed the overlay district, the marijuana establishment overlay district, that set forth the bylaws, and then the overlay district itself. If a company wants to locate in the overlay district, then they have to apply for a special permit through the Planning Board, go through site plan review, and then ultimately get a host community agreement from the Select Board. What we've seen is we've seen a few companies that are wishing to locate outside of the overlay district, go before the zoning Board of Appeals. And in that case, they're able to, they've been able to secure a use variance, and they do not need to go for a special permit from the Planning Board, they would just go for a site plan review, and then they would apply for a host community agreement through the Select Board. So we've had a, a few of those. In June of 2020, the ZBA granted a use variance for 757 State Road, which was a cultivation and manufacturing facility. In July of 2021, they granted a use variance for a retail facility, a 747 State Road. We are currently in, in the negotiation process for a host community agreement for the 757 State Road, which is the, the old tennis club. The, the 747 State Road, which is the retail facility, they are expected to apply for a host community agreement. We have issued an RFQ, so those are due at the end of this month, and we'll see who applies. And then recently, before the zoning Board of Appeals, there's a petitioner seeking a use variance at 155 Old Fall River Road, that's the old Schofield Farm. You may be familiar with this, going back to 2006, CPC utilized funding to purchase this farm and sold it at a significantly reduced race to, reduce rate to a local farmer and placed agricultural preservation restriction on it. So, you know, this is a process that applicants have, they, they apply for a permit through the Building Department, and Mr. Braga can kind of go forward on that, but he then issues a denial letter because it's not conforming with zoning, and then they have the opportunity to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals to get a use variance. So, Mr. Braga can certainly kind of go over more of the process, but we're certainly open to any questions.
Mr. Harrod?
I have a question. When the state initially told us we had licenses to offer, they were three retail and one grow, did they expand on that?
So, the way our bylaw is written, our bylaw states to, to look at the, basically the law is set by the state for the, the minimum and maximum allowed by the state. So then the state sets a standard of 20% for retail, 20% of your liquor stores for retail facilities, which is that, where that three comes from. And then they, they do not dictate a number for cultivation and manufacturing facilities. And also, our bylaw is for the overlay district itself, and, which is why they do not have to go for a special permit from Planning Board if it's outside of the overlay district.
So, to Cody's point, so there's not a limited number of manufacturing and cultivation facilities? If, if, even if the town was limited to one, that would be in the marijuana overlay district and not outside of that district where there's proposed facilities, proposed?
And we're not the final say, I mean, this is only the beginning. They have to go before the, before the state and get permitted before the state, and that's, that's very difficult.
Correct.
Financially, it's probably one of the most difficult to, to, to be permitted with the state without ample finances, and they're very, very careful about that. So you can't willy-nilly on a, on a, on a dime, say, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to do this, and you don't have two dimes to rub against. So, it's important that, that not only do we vet, vet them, but the state spends an enormous amount of time vetting these, these businesses that, looking for that.
Well, one of the concerns that I have is that, you know, there was a process that, you know, the town went through to put certain, you know, put these in certain areas, and now they just don't care. They'll go wherever they can. Whether or not I agree with what's going over on State Road, you know, that's a different story, but what raised this question was just looking in on the ZBA meeting last week, and just catching the back end of it, you know, wondering what, what's going on. And then all of a sudden, you know, now you're looking at a facility, you know, some type of a facility in an area where really there's no, there's only one commercial application, you know, and, and now come to find out that it's a farm that, you know, the town had had and sold, and it was for agricultural use, now all of a sudden, that agricultural use is something entirely different. I mean, are they, the applicant, is it for a growing facility, or is it for a growing facility?
It is, so they're looking to construct 80 by 100, two-story barn, so it's 8,000 square foot, footprint, 16,000 square feet cultivation facility.
How many, how many cultivating facilities can we have in town?
The way our bylaw is currently written, we do not have a specified number.
Okay. I, I've gotten an awful lot of contact, and it's from residents all over town, and I've been trying to follow it carefully. And to me, it goes back to the original tennis club issue, which I think it's a perfect place for it, it's got solar already there, and it's a great facility, but Town Meeting turned that building down twice. But we had that conversation, and I, I also reached out during that process to the Zoning Board of Appeals to talk about it, and they made it very clear that their mandate, to them, is look at each and every individual project on a one-by-one singular basis. And they almost don't care what Town Meeting says. They look at all the laws that, that, that constrict or, or apply, and they make a decision based on that. And now we're faced with the same situation on, at the Schofield Farm. And there's a lot of downside to it because it was, the, it's ag land that's been approved, and the town paid $800-plus thousand for that land, then sold it to the people who own it now for $80,000 to farm it, with giant restrictions on it. And it's complex, and I give credit to ZBA, they're really trying to work it, they had a continuance from the last meeting because they really want to go back and examine it. And it's a tough call, because, okay, someone else shows up again on Dartmouth Street, you know, or, you know, on Route 6 again, and they probably have to look at it again because that's what they do. And what have we done with the overlay district that was there? And that's part of the problem, but that overlay district is very limited. It's expensive to put stuff there, there's not a lot of land, and people aren't going there, there's one building there, so...
It's too busy.
And I'm hearing stuff like, why do we have Town Meeting to vote on these things when we're out of control with it? To, the other people say, great, let them do it, because, whatever. And it's, it's made, it's taken the process to, and that's our government, that's how our government works. And it's a really difficult situation, and it's hard, and ZBA is, they're really wrestling with it, that I can see.
Although it hasn't happened recently, this board has been on record not to have zoning use...
Use variance.
Use variances in commercial areas.
Yeah.
And it's been, and it was, it was, it was a motion made by this board several years ago, it hasn't been reaffirmed, but it's still, it's a motion that's on the books, saying that this board is against use variances in commercial areas.
And that goes back to the charter. The charter is vague, and how well it's enforced, and this is the time, this is the time of the, and I know you're involved in that, Shawn, that maybe it's, it's high time to look at that and put some teeth into it because to mark the regulations.
I mean, part of, part of, and there's a conundrum here. And the conundrum is this, is that if we were talking about non-cannabis-related industry, then I don't think there'd be too much of a problem. But the enticement of the cannabis industry, as far as money to the town, makes it kind of like, okay, if you're against the facility, then you're against the town receiving money. If you're for the facility, then you're, you want the money. You know what I mean? And, and it makes it very difficult, because it is, it is a revenue, whether or not, it's not a continuing source of revenue, but it is some form of revenue for the town. And it makes it a difficult situation to, you know, to go against it or to speak up against it, but there is a process, and the process has been circumvented, as far as I'm concerned, by going through the use variance.
The future of our town going forward with use variance and how we grow is, to me, is in part of the master plan and part of the charter, is, this is critical for us to do the right job over the next year, to make sure that we make decisions on whatever it is, maybe just open the whole thing up, whatever it is, we need as a town to make these decisions, because I'm hearing a lot of, a lot of negativity about it, but on the other hand, others say, no problem, just let it go.
Well, I, I mean...
So, part of it, it makes it quite interesting. So, there's a small portion that's limited industrial, which is the portion that they're seeking the use variance for, and the rest is single residence fee, which obviously...
I mean, and, and...
And if it's an active use, they can't prove hardship.
Well, that was what I was...
They have, that's what they're trying to do, yeah.
So, my concern, a couple of things, is that we need to revisit this use variance, and I think we need to put our arms around it again, just to get a better feel, because I know we were together on the board when we pushed that through. But the thing that we need to understand, that the Zoning Board of Appeals is exactly that, a board of appeals, and you have to prove hardship, in most cases, 99 times out of 100. And that's, that's the, that's the issue here. Now, they're claiming at the farm that they can't make a go of the farm, so that's their hardship.
Hardship has to be owing as a soil chip at tomorrow.
Right.
Their argument is, does not satisfy the legal...
Okay, so, we need to know that, the Zoning Board of Appeals needs to know that, that not spend an awful lot of time on this, wasteful time if it's not going to be legal. So I think maybe a good idea for, Anthony, that you, that you go to one of those meetings.
The biggest concern is with the use variance, is sticking, sticking a industry or a, a business or, or something in an area where it really doesn't belong, you know? And that's the thing. And, and I had, I had somebody tell me, you know, say that, well, you know, if the zoning board doesn't go your way, then replace them. No, I'm not going to do that. That's spite. That's happened once before, and I refuse to do that. And, you know, just because somebody disagrees with you doesn't necessarily mean you have to just, you got to replace them. It's not going to happen.
I truly believe that, think they're doing the right thing.
I think the...
And they're trying hard to...
There has been, has there been decisions made by the ZBA that's, you know, I've scratched my head, yes. But I know they make, I know they go through the process, I know the process is there, and they do, you know, they do their, their job the way they're supposed to be. And that's something that, you know, I can honestly stand by them and say, they are doing what they are supposed to be doing.
We have a good board there right now.
Right, and to be honest with you, sometimes you agree with them, sometimes you don't. It's just like this board, it's just like the Planning Board, the Board of Health, everybody else. There are things that we do that people don't agree with, there are things that we, we do that people do agree with, you know? And that's just the whole thing, and I'm not one to, to, to replace anybody because I, you know, I don't agree with them.
I, I, I for one, look forward to next year when we're handed the master plan and handed the work from the charter commission. Okay, I, I think it's up to us as a Select Board not to make the decision, we don't have any power, but to get these boards together, say, okay, what do we want to do to tighten these things up? Maybe they want to do nothing, but they're in a real quandary, in my view, with the ZBA, and people don't like it because they feel like the thing's out of control, in either direction.
Well, and it's, you know, and the next ZBA meeting coming up is going to have a real, real pistol about it too, you know? Because now you're talking about a, a business wanting to cover, you know, 61% of the impervious cut, cover in an area where only 10% is allowed, you know? That's our aquifer they're talking about, you know? So...
I haven't heard of either for the Select Board and something that they've, you know, thrown a lawsuit to the ZBA.
Well, that one may end up getting a letter.
This is what our...
I think that's our job, absolutely.
Nothing wrong with that.
And I don't think they would, they would, they wouldn't have a problem with that, because I think they're looking for direction in that regard, because this is a really tough, I mean, I really gave them credit the other night to really work, and the founder said, we can't make a decision, we need to look at it some more, because it's very complex. And they really look at it from all sides, the hardship, the land, even the house. No, no one can live in the house, or the, the proposal was to make it a museum of some kind, because no one can live that close to the facility. I mean, there's all kinds of disagreement, this thing is really, it's quite a creative project they put together. And maybe it's not even going to work anyway, because it's illegal.
I don't know, I, I wouldn't ask to look at it, so...
Anybody else on the zoning board stuff? Well, it's, it's...
If I've mischaracterized anything, I'm, I'm not a lawyer for sure, but I, I mean, certainly let me know, but I, I'm trying to listen to it to get something out of it.
Yeah, I, I mean, we've provided all the information. I did have a brief conversation with Attorney Savistano and Attorney Cruz, where they expressed basically, you know, what Attorney Savistano just stated. That information was relayed to the board. We've given them all the information that we can, and really, at this point, like you all said, it's up to them to make their decision based on the, you know, the statutory guidelines.
Ultimately, it comes down to this board too, with the host agreement.
Right.
Whether we...
We don't have to honor it.
We don't have to have the host agreement.
Exactly.
But this person's going to go through five or six different boards in our town, they've got to spend a lot of money on attorneys, and they're going to go to the state, and maybe it's time, you know, if, if it's not going to work, then maybe we, we get it done early, because, you know, fairness to this person, because the lawyers of us, it's a huge process, and they're just getting started.
Right. But that's, but unfortunately, that's the way the process is, unless it's taken out of, unless it is taken out of the municipality, municipalities, oh god, my tongue, municipality hand, it's still, it's within the purview of each town, city in town, to, to conduct itself.
Unless there's an obvious illegal portion of it that we can address early on, but...
Maybe we should send that letter, and we should do a little background, Anthony.
Start somewhere, because Ad Commission, I mean, we have to start somewhere, so we're here at ZBA, that's what he decided to stake their claim to it first. The Ad Commission for the state hasn't okayed the project yet either.
Right. I mean, and, and, I mean, that's important to, that would be important to me, you know, as to...
Absolutely. They say, oh, I think they're going to pass it.
The Ad Commission fought hard for that, for that hard, for that farm.
Absolutely.
In the past, the ZBA has said to an applicant that we want you to go somewhere else first, and we'll give you the opportunity to withdraw, without prejudice, to refile.
Maybe that's what they should do.
Right. Go there first. They did that with regard to Brady Estates, they said, we go, go to the Select Board first, because they have a...
Just to, just to clarify, the APR, the Agricultural Preservation Restriction, which you're referencing, is held by the State Farm Bureau.
Farm Bureau, I'm sorry.
So, and I've been in constant communication with their director and their board. They are taking it up at an upcoming meeting, and we should have an answer this week prior to the next Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. And, and again, the board is also aware of that, that timeline.
Ad Commission was my mistake, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. So I guess that would be the...
All right.
Maybe that, maybe then, unless, unless somebody wants to do something, maybe we'll just let it see what happens.
See how it plays out.
You got a suggestion for us, Cody?
No. No, I'm...
You shouldn't do things like that. You shouldn't do things like that. That's me.
As you may recall, when they made their decision on the 747 State Road, um, you asked to have the zoning board before you as a board to express your opinion on it, and I think they took that to heart.
Happened, and all of a sudden, you know, Town Meeting said no, and but, oh, wait a minute, there's a zoning board of appeals that said yes. What, then what was the point of going to Town Meeting? You know, so, um, that, and that's, and I think that's what threw everybody for a loop that time, so.
This is what you have when you have a big town.
Doesn't have jurisdiction over this piece, you know, so that's.
That's what I mean by small number.
It's a decentralized government, which needs to be centralized. So, Mr. Harrod?
I was just wondering if the ZBA will ask Attorney Savistano's help going forward on this issue? Will they reach out to you?
You have a support, that's, that's all that counts. All right, that concludes new business, old business. Do we have anything under COVID, Liz Connor, or Lathan Kuchuk?
Uh, nothing new in COVID or the.
Bless you. Board's pleasure?
Motion to accept uh, and to hold them in.
No, that's not necessary. This is open session, so.
Motion to accept.
I can let you know that whoever set up the email trail for the petition also included the Select Board. So um, even though the email is directly sent to the school committee, the Select Board was CC who it was and deleted it. Um, I started saving it as of a week ago Monday. Uh, there's been 735 uh, since a week ago, uh, two weeks Monday, I should say. So, but. Yeah, I mean, it's, to be honest with you, it's nice to get something other than, you know, um, some of the stuff that we do get, mostly from people looking, vendors and stuff like that looking to sell the latest.
Quick question, if you don't.
Yes.
Before we adjourn, uh, what's the update on the sign-out front, electronic sign?
Uh, it's ordered. Uh, everything's back ordered. We hope to have it in, within a few weeks, right, Cody?
That was a little excessive, incorrect.
So that is, that's four more weeks.
Yeah, it could be, but it's been ordered, been waiting for it as soon as it comes.
We're waiting for the votes. All right, so, believe it or not, it was nice to see everybody in person.
Just landing.
It's like dais, yes, but it, over here it's called, it's called, that's a dais, over here it's called a dais.
You like that?
Yes, the dais. Mr. Gracie?
You'll go in that room?
No. Or we can close this room and have it in here. One of the two.
What about?
Let's see what happens, let's see what happens if we have one scheduled.
He's, he's pretty much not concerned with masks at all.